So, Mr. Cottrell is going to be here as soon as he can. And so we'll just write and call this the last note for the sound of the time. All right, so we'll go ahead and we'll start with the law talk.
Thank you. Chair Lane.
Here.
Commissioner Tonelli will be late. Commissioner Soklo.
Here.
Commissioner Lamb.
Here.
Commissioner Lerner.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, good. And for the record, I did. All right, so the next item, item number two is the public comment section. And that's our items that are not on the agenda, so for those of you who haven't been here before, we, there you are.
Oh.
All right, good.
Here.
All right, so here now.
Yeah.
So, this item, item number two is to give anybody who has something that they want to bring to our attention or bring up an item that I look at later, but it's sort of a free space and sometimes that leads to either investigation of something or an awareness for the, for the, or to know about. So, I'll go ahead and open the public comment section for something that's not on the agenda. Now, I'll open that and 15 people did not come to their voting, so I will go ahead and close the public comments section on item two. And now, the next item is the approval of the minutes from the December 5th meeting. And Commissioner Lamb was not there on that one, so we'll have to work for it.
Yep.
Unless you stayed up night and watched the.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
With your mom.
I didn't see anything that needed to be changed on it.
Neither, it's okay.
Yeah. Okay, so any motion in second?
And we moved out the approved minutes of September 2018 as they are prepared and presented.
Moved in second, moved in second. And all of the papers say aye. Aye.
Abstain.
Any one abstain? Okay, no, no, so four, zero, one. And the next items are publicly carrying items, so let me go through the process of them. The government hardly records what you have, so it'll be a replay at the same date. This item, or the item on this, unfortunately, agenda, we started with an overview from the staff. And then if the commissioners ask staff any specific questions, then we open it for public comment. And the public comment will start with the applicant or their representative. And then we'll close the public comment, bring it back for discussion, if action is appropriate with the commission, and that will be the process for everyone. And I may say it another time if anyone comes in that they made him over here.
Yes, sir.
And I need to abstain.
Oh, that's right, because you can stay there because you're not, can you stay there?
Yeah, I'm staying there.
Yeah, yeah, because it's not a conflict. It's just a member, Commissioner Lamb, since you missed the full discussion last time, he didn't want to be part of the vote on this one, so.
Just abstain somebody.
Yeah, well, you'll abstain on this too.
Perfect.
All right, good. All right, then I'll go ahead and start the first item for A, a special structures permit at 355 Stevic Drive, we talked about this last time, and I'll go ahead and reopen it with the staff report.
Thank you. So, the item before you at 355 Stevic Way is an item that was continued from your December planning commission meeting. Just a summary of the scope of the request again before you is a special structures permit to allow for consideration of a swimming pool, which is a defined accessory structure by municipal code, to be located less than eight feet from the main residence, which is one of the standard development setback requirements for an accessory structure such as a swimming pool. The basic premise of the 4-0 vote to continue the item to tonight's meeting were related to concerns expressed by some of the commissioners in terms of safety and access concerns of the pool and its close proximity to the main residence. I'll go back, it's all detailed in the staff report, and we did discuss it at the December meeting, but for those who weren't here and who may be watching, the pool itself is located approximately one and a half feet from one side of the main residence. It's located within an interior courtyard of the main house itself. It meets and actually significantly exceeds all other setback requirements for an accessory structure for both the side, front, and rear setbacks. So, the proposal before you tonight, in light of the continuation from the December meeting, does not propose to change the location of the swimming pool. However, the applicant has made a series of other revisions in the attempts to address some of the commission's concerns, again, related to access and safety, given the pool's proposed location. So specifically those revisions, the, as I mentioned, the pool being located within the interior courtyard of the main residence. The functionality, I should also point out of what is defined as a swimming pool, but as referred to within the staff report as a swim spa, does not function as a standard swimming pool. It's significantly smaller in size. It's only seven feet wide by 16 feet deep. It's approximately four and, excuse me, 16 feet long, approximately four and a half feet deep. And it's one of, it's a drop-in or unit that drops into the ground, and its functionality is for exercise purposes. There's a current that provides exercise with for those who are swimming within it. The location within the interior courtyard of the main house allows the, what we'll call the swim spa, to not be visible from any neighboring property or from any points of the public right-of-way. The proposal at the December hearing had the pool enclosed with a three-foot-tall temporary mesh fencing. The plans before you tonight have removed that mesh fencing, however, have, I won't say replaced, but have revised the scope to now have that entire interior courtyard to be enclosed from the rear and side yard of the property by a six-foot-tall structurally-created glass wall that will have one self-latching gate door that will be the only access to that courtyard from any of the exterior yards of the home. So, the primary means of access to the swim spa will be only from the main residence by the doors on that first floor that are self-alarmed. The applicants have also proposed three safety features for the swim spa. The California Building Code for all swimming pools, regardless of their size or functionality, do have a minimum requirement for two safety features from a list, I think, of about seven. This proposal is voluntarily adding a third safety feature in the attempts to address some of the concerns by the commission, and those are detailed within the staff report. Given the conversations that were had at the last hearing, I did review these proposed revisions directly with both the fire marshal and the building official of the town, Fire Marshal of Menlo Park Fire District. Neither, neither individual expressed any concerns with the proposed pool in its proposed location. They did state that at the time at building permit issuance, that the standard series of health and safety code requirements that are required for any swimming pool would be assessed for this swim spa as well. With that, going back to the three required findings for a special structures permit, the first being that the structure, in this case, again, the swim spa, will not negatively impact neighboring properties with respect to privacy and view. For the reasons as outlined in the report, staff believes that finding can be made. Secondly, that the swim spa will comply with all other development standards of the municipal code, including height and landscape screening. Then, staff is finding that, finding that that finding can also be made, given the proposal before us. And then lastly, that the special structures permit is found to be consistent with the objectives of the general plan, and that finding, again, in staff's professional opinion, is also found to be made. And so for those reasons, staff is recommending approval of the application per the conditions as listed in the special structures permit.
Okay, any questions, staff? Okay, great. And I'll go ahead and open the hearing, and we'll start with the applicant. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Paul Warner. I'm the architect. And I'd like to reiterate that we're hopeful that the changes that we've made, in addition to all the things that we had talked about before, the intent of the changes were that the entire courtyard becomes sort of the secure space, right? And so that any access to that whole courtyard is either alarmed, there's a gate, the structural glass wall is similar to what you would see in a hotel, you know, like a wind structure or something like that around a swimming, swimming pool. Again, this is a spa. It's really intended for exercise. It's not going to be where all the kids hang out and a big pool party type of thing. So, you know, all those things combined, getting, getting the information from Menlo, you know, Fire and Building, that we feel that this should, we hope, address those concerns that were brought up, and that the position of the pool is very much a discreet, sheltered space that really would not impact any other property.
Great, thank you. All right, any other, anyone else of interest in the meeting?
Yep.
Yes, just to reiterate that, yeah, the whole point of it is for exercise. It's a little pool that you go in and you swim against it. And I actually like the changes that we made since the last time because I like to have it blocked off with, like, then the wind can't get in. But the whole point is it, for it to be close to the house, because if it's far away, I'm not going to use it as an exercise. You know, I'm free going out there. Anyway, that's all.
All right, thank you. All right, anyone else on the item?
We could get your name.
Oh, sure.
Oh, sure, sorry. Sonia Sandler.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, anyone else interested in telling me? Going once, going twice? All right, close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission for discussion and action is appropriate. This is much, much improved in terms of everything that I was concerned about last time, both in terms of, you know, sort of miscellaneous use by somebody who wasn't living there or people that have come later, and it's much more of a, it feels much more swim spa to me than exposed, sort of, pounded, fallen to. So, it's a, it'll be a much safer place to be, and it seems to me that, and it's got all kinds of glass around it too, so if people can see if in the living room and other places, so if there's anybody in there, any problems, it's, it's, you know, it's going to be easily retrievable. So, I like that part of it a lot. So, I really appreciate the work on it.
I agree, yeah, I would agree as well. And I was a bit on the fence last time when we had discussed whether this spa had been built inside the home. There wouldn't, it would never have even come to the planning commission. And I think with the new safeguards added, it's almost safer than if it were inside the house. So, now you feel really comfortable.
Right, yeah, that's a good point, good point. It feels like the, it feels like a little spa and place. All right, all right, anything else?
No, just like to thank the applicant for taking the extra steps, and thanks for your patience over the last month or so.
Thank you, Chris.
And thanks staff for looking into this as thoroughly as they did, and liked their findings, and also the fact that the, they had more input from, with the building official and Fire Marshal, they had input before, but the added confidence that they had given the project, and that extra safety measure for swimming pools where you only need two out of the seven, now you get three, that's, that's all factors that come into it. So, thank you for your patience, thanks for your cooperation. Still, for the record, not really comfortable at all with the process that we all went through. And the point within that process at which we were able to review this and how far along the construction was by the time we were able to see it.
Right.
So, there's something wrong with that, but I'm willing to go with the staff's recommendation, and thanks again.
Thank you.
All right, the clarification, the motions said, said it late, and if anything else is dry, I can just dry. At least my nap said it was dry, so.
Yes, give it a try, try it out.
All right, just for those of you who might be making a motion, there's, the motion written out, that way rather than dry. All right, any other comments, questions? Okay, then we're ready for motion? Okay, good.
And move that the planning commission approved the special structures permit at 355 Stevic Drive, based on the findings and for the reasons enumerated in the staff report, subject to the conditions listed in the draft special structures permit certificate to allow for the construction of a swimming pool spa to be less than eight feet from the main residence.
Moved in seconded?
Same.
Ready, Paul?
Yeah, okay, Paul.
All right, move in second, all of us, if they would say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I have one exception, thank you. All right, wasn't that easy? All right. Happy to hear.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening, and thank you for taking that. All right, go ahead.
Thank you.
All right, the public hearing, I just want to make sure you're familiar with the process we're using at this point, just so you know, because you just came in. What we're doing is, on either item on the publicly carrying items fours, we start with an update from staff, and then there's questions from the commission, and then we open up our discussion from the applicant, or anyone else who, if you start from the applicant, and anyone else would like to speak on the item, and then, and then close the public comment, we get back to the commission for action is appropriate. So, let's see the whole process. All right, we're at item four B, which is Heritage Tree Removal Permit, 233 Park Avenue. So, we'll start with the staff report.
Thank you. So, the request before you tonight is a heritage tree removal permit at 233 Park to allow for the removal of three heritage deodor cedar trees. The property at 233 Park is a corner lot, located, has frontages along both Park and Santiago Avenue. The three trees proposed for removal are on what we define, we, the town defined as exterior side property line along Santiago, close towards the intersection of Park and Santiago. So, if you drove by, you see those trees are clearly visible from the public right-of-way. The basic premise to remove all three trees are a result of all three trees having poor health, as well as noted within the project applicant's submittal or response of incompatibility with other existing native oak and redwood trees that are on the property, as well as within the greater neighborhood. They have submitted a project arborist report that notes that all three trees are in both poor to fair condition. Two of the three trees have, were noted to have been crowned or cut significantly on one side due to utility line clearance, and those same two trees also were noted to have low vigor branch dieback on what's remaining from that, what hadn't been cut back from the PG&E clearance. The third tree was also side-pruned for utility line clearance, and has a very narrow spreading crown per the project arborist report. The town arborist performed a peer review of the project arborist report, has visited the site on numerous occasions, and also prepared a professional memorandum and recommendation. She concurs with the project arborist report that the trees are indeed in poor, fair to poor health, that they also have not been properly maintained over time, as noted by their existing conditions, and that PG&E has indeed pruned these trees numerous times for the overhead high-voltage line clearance. The proposal also includes a replanting plan of, let's see, I think we have three, yeah, three native redwood trees to be planted at the same general proximity as the three cedar trees to be removed to help provide a replacement aesthetic mitigation from the public right-of-way in terms of screening, of green screening, just any different type of tree species. So, with all of that said, and as outlined in the report, staff is recommending removal, or excuse me, approval of the heritage tree removal permit conjunction with the recommended heritage tree approval certificate, which also includes the replanting plan.
And questions, staff? And we definitely talked to PG&E about, there were more than those trees over, I think it was an oak tree that looked like it was supposed to decline instead of all those, you know, talking on the sides and trying to cut down the middle and just, there are some really bad, bad, bad trees.
Yeah, just one quick question. And I don't know if I missed something in, in reading over things. And we're looking at trees 10, 11, and 12, and in the McLennanham letter, it says protected trees nine through 12 are proposed for removal, and I'm wondering what happened with tree nine?
It was already approved.
That one was already approved at my level.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It was, that one was already approved at staff level.
Okay, thank you.
It was, it was the one that was in the worst shape, so I put that.
Thank you.
All right, all right, all right, any other questions? I didn't spot that. All right, and we'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and we'll start with the applicant or the person.
Hi, I'm Nora May Serucy with Pacific Peninsula Architecture. It's a pretty self-explanatory situation. I think the trees are just in really poor health, and we'd love to replace them with redwood trees. We were considering oaks, but the homeowner is allergic to oak trees, so that's why we went with redwoods. And we're proposing large, they're 18-inch tall, or 18 feet tall to start, so they're big box trees.
Yeah.
Which will be great for screening.
Yeah.
I just wanted to mention that we sent out public notices, sorry, ahead of public notices, the homeowner sent out letters to their neighbors, and we did get one neighbor who came back and was supportive, the neighbor right across Santiago. So, and we haven't heard anybody else say anything negative, so.
Okay.
Doesn't seem like anybody dislikes the idea.
Any questions?
Sure.
About the redwoods, and I guess maybe Sally can answer this too. If there's a problem with the current trees and their location and the overhead lines, how is that going to affect the redwoods down the road?
So, we're actually looking at undergrounding all overhead lines on the lot anyway. So, that's one thing. But as far as placement of the actual trees, you know, we put a general location, but obviously we're going to try and keep them away from the overhead lines, so.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe that's something Sally can help us determine where to plant them to avoid any conflict, but.
So, you're looking at undergrounding the lines on Lane?
Yeah, Santiago and Park Lane.
Both streets.
Yeah, mhm.
Because it looks like there are lines that go through the oaks on.
Yeah, there's a lot of them, yeah. That's why we're still in process with PG&E about determining if that's possible, so it's in progress.
Speaking of redwoods, one of the most common trees that we have problems with an arborist's notice is redwoods in suburbia. They belong out in the hills and the countryside because they have widespread of shallow roots, and I know as a homeowner, I wanted to strangle whoever planted the ones in our yard, because they disrupt the lawn, the foundations of buildings or structures. They've had us replace our driveway at least three times because of the speed bumps. So, I'm just saying, I know you have the endorsement of our arborist, but hit twice about that species and see if there might be something a little more people-friendly. That's all I would comment on that.
Either that or come up with a deep, deep root water process for it, because that's what we've seen is the difference in terms of the impact it has on the surface. But, yeah, it just, and also, if the lines are put up in the ground, having those roots grow towards the line, it'll be a little bit, I like the idea of redwoods a lot, and I like the look of it, and so I appreciate the fact that you're going for that, and I understand the issue with the oak tree, so.
Or at least, we're trying to keep them away from any hardscape. There's going to be some, you know, pathways, DG, deep in those gravel pathways around them, but nothing, there's no major paving near them, and we're obviously keeping them inboard of the property line as well, so.
Okay.
We're trying to avoid conflicts if possible, but.
I agree with your comments about the redwoods, I love them, they're beautiful. But I'm wondering, the residents are allergic to oaks, and there are a lot of, a lot of oaks still.
Yeah.
Will remain, obviously, but.
We laughed about that. The windows will remain closed.
Explain how, you know, putting three or four oaks back into the landscape when there are already quite a number that will be remained, is going to add any extra issue to the allergy situation, so.
I guess it'll just help, you know, that much more. There's also some other, a grouping of redwoods on the back.
Right, I saw that, yeah.
Yeah, northeast side of the property, so it's, the fact that there's such tall trees on one end, we're sort of trying to complement that as well, so balance it out a little bit.
Yeah, I like the fact that in that, city location, I like any of the straight-up tree rather than growing up tree, and that'll also help, give us less opportunity for PG&E to help. All right, and any questions? All right, anything else on that?
That's it. And the homeowner's here tonight too, but I don't think nothing needs anything unless.
All right, good.
Yeah.
You're good, all right.
Thank you.
Gee, everybody. All right, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back for the, for the commission for discussion and action is appropriate. I'm good. Yeah, I was, you know, this is a classic example of my advice, when heritage, when heritage label doesn't, doesn't detect the quality of the tree, you know, definitely, I can appreciate the, I can sort of identify the tree because it, you know, both have a lack of vigor, but I will, I'll say definitely this, this was, these are good trees to go.
I agree, other than my comments on the road, I'm fine with all that.
All right, any motions?
I'll make it, if you want.
Yeah.
Move that the planning commission approved a heritage tree removal permit at 233 Park Lane, based on the findings and for the reasons enumerated in the staff report, subject to the conditions listed in the draft special structures permit certificate to allow for the removal of three heritage deodor cedar trees noted as numbers 10, 11, and 12.
All right, great.
Move in the motion.
Move in seconded? If you want to, you know what you touched, that's good. All right, all of us, if they would say aye.
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 Technical comment here, the same problem we had with the first one. Is it an avenue or a lane?
Yeah.
Right.
It's a lane.
Yeah, it's really, my nap is up, I'm not allowed to go down the. All right, special, yeah, I feel like somebody should just, happen to happen, it isn't enough and change. All right, good, all right. Special structures permit at, down the street from the first item, 331 Stevic Drive, I mean US Drive. So, go ahead and start with the staff report, and then we'll, then we'll come back.
So, the request before you tonight at 331 Stevic Drive, which is immediately adjacent to the property that we heard two items back at 355 Stevic Drive, to the left of that property, if standing on Stevic. So, the request is for a special structures permit to allow for consideration of a tennis court, which is also a defined accessory structure, to encroach into the required rear yard setback for the property. The property is what is defined as a double frontage lot, meaning both its front property line and its rear property line, but a street. Given that fact, the development standards for accessory structures are slightly different than what the standard accessory structure setback requirements are. Specifically, because of the double frontage at the rear property line, the, any accessory structure is required to be located a minimum of 30 feet from the rear property line, as opposed to the 10-foot kind of standard rear yard setback requirement for accessory structures. Into the detail of the actual distances that are proposed under the special structures permit, specifically, the request is for the tennis court to encroach 17 feet into the required 30-foot rear yard setback. That results in a proposed 13-foot rear yard setback. The tennis court itself is proposed to be located on the southeast or the left rear of the property, if you're standing in front of the site along Stevic Drive. The property itself is under almost completion of construction, with the main residence and some other accessory buildings. In terms of the site layout, beyond the main residence that was approved in the last few years, as well as detached garage, there is an existing swimming pool and pool house that was part of the original site that is proposed to remain. Given its location, combined with the location of the approved garage, the remaining area that the applicants felt they had left to work with, so to speak, for an additional accessory structure, i.e. the proposed tennis court, is on the left rear of the property. The tennis court itself does exceed the other required development standards for an accessory structure, specifically its distance from a side property line, from a front property line, and from the main house itself. The proposed tennis court is noted to be smaller than a regulation court by 10 feet in both directions, both in width and in length. There is existing vegetation along the rear property line at Mandarin Way. It's also noted that in conjunction with the main house and the other accessory buildings and structures that are already approved on the site, there is an approved landscape screening plan. As part of this proposal, the applicants are proposing to add additional screening along the rear property line to help screen what would be a nine-foot-tall green standard link, chain link fencing around the entire perimeter of the tennis court. So, the, the town arborist has noted that this proposed new landscaping would need has noted that this proposed new landscaping would need to amend the existing approved landscape screening plan so that it would be part of the finaling of this entire development site, should the approval be granted for the tennis court. Public notice was sent out to all property owners within five hundred feet of the site, and no content, comments have been received by staff. The applicants did note they conducted their own public outreach as well to all of the adjacent properties, um, on both sides, as well as across the street and behind them across the street on Mandarin Way. Um, the front would be the front property, uh, line close to their rear property line, um, across Mandarin. Uh, and that no, um, comments, no comments of concern were received either. Um, just one more piece to note, uh, that it, going back and looking at the purpose and intent of the additional, call it larger rear yard setback requirement for lots that have double frontage, um, was mainly focused on trying to avoid having larger structures and rooflines, um, popping up along the street, such as a pool house, or a guest house, or a traditional accessory building. Um, and that the extent of structure that would be visible with a tennis court, i.e. the nine-foot green chain link fencing, is noted to have a much lesser potential aesthetic impact than, say, a wall and/or a pitched roofline, um, for a more traditional accessory-type building. So with all of that said, and for the reasons as outlined in the staff report, uh, staff does find that the proposal meets the three required special structures permit findings, uh, in order to allow for the tennis court to encroach within the rear yard setback, combined with the proposed, um, landscaping and other conditions in the draft special structures permit that was attached. So, I'm happy to answer any questions. I believe the, uh, property owner is, is here as well, if you have any questions.
Any questions, St. Anne?
Oh, I have a question.
Yes.
About undergrounding overhead utility lines, just like in the last, um, property, how, so how does that, how does that impact the neighborhood? Um, to what extent are the wires undergrounded? Just off, on that property?
So the, it would be the lines that would service the property in question typically, those are gonna be associated with a main residence. Um, I don't, I didn't, I don't have that set of plans before us tonight, but I would presume that that would have been the requirement at the time that the building permit was issued for the construction of the main houses. It is a standard type of requirement that the town is trying to implement with all new development. So when new houses come in, we're trying to get them to underground all of the utility lines with the hope that in the future, everything will be undergrounded.
Okay, so.
Our, our lines at our house are under, underground from the street out to the house, but there's a bunch of, there's a bunch of power lines in front of, in front of, down the street.
Down the street.
Yes.
So let me just ask a question for clarification. Is this with all new structures, whether it's the primary residence or accessory?
I believe it's the main residence.
Okay, and so is this a, a new, completely new build, or it's just?
Um, it, 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 pretty much, less the pool and the pool house.
Right, okay.
Under separate permit.
So that, so you said that, that from a landscape screening standpoint, the landscape screening will be changed on, on the two sides that are facing the boundary? So that won't be part of our motion, but it will be part of their building, updating the building permit?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, good. All right, uh, any more questions?
Yep.
And we'll go ahead and open the public hearing, comment section. Do you have two minutes there?
Oh, okay. Um, yeah, I'm the, uh, property owner, and, um. Oh, hi, Betty Ho. I'm the property owner, and, um, I think normally, um, we would have been able to meet the setback requirements, not, if not because of the double frontage, and because of the existing pool and pool house, we really have nowhere else to go except for this property. And we actually have personal, I have personally talked to our neighbor immediately next to our, um, tennis court where it is going to be, and, um, the property owner said that they're totally fine with having a court. In fact, they have a grandson, and they would love to come over the way as well. And then we talked to all of our other neighbors across the street and next door. Um, so, and everyone seems very supportive of, um, the tennis court.
All right, thank you. Any, any questions?
Yeah.
All right, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak on that? It's too easy, it's too easy a lot. All right, bring it back for discussion, uh, and, uh, action as appropriate. This is gonna be a major party cast, there's no doubt about it. I'm designing, I love the, I love the quadruple doors on the back panel. Right, um, I, uh, any, any discussions?
Stay forward, and, um, just for, just so I know, uh, how far is it from the back of the, uh, property to the, to the, uh, serve line on the tennis court, do you know?
To the serve line?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, it would be.
Like twenty feet?
Well, no, it, let's see, actually.
And, and, and the reason I'm asking it is because I wanted to be, sort of basically say that that's, that's the idea, you know, that's the primary plain surface area, so that's.
Seventeen, I was like.
So you're just asking what's the boundary around the court itself?
No, I'm asking for the, the line in the back, is it kind of the thing, so it was as right as a dash line. That's around thirty feet.
Thirty feet, correct, yes.
Okay, that's what, that, that, see, if there were, if there was way up, way off of that, and I, and you want to sort of on the actual plain surface area, but the plain surface is, is in that thirty feet, so I'm feeling like that, thanks. I mean, on the serve, you gotta stand behind the line, but after that, I can tell you got a hundred and fifty mile an hour serve too.
That's a really good point.
Yeah, so that, that was the part that I was, I was covered with. All right, any, any other comments, questions? All right, uh, need a motion?
I guess it's my turn.
Yeah, it's your turn. And I'll second it, if you, if.
There you go.
Providing you with your wild.
I move that the planning commission approve the special structures permit at three thirty-one Steadicry.
Right, that's, yeah. I do.
Based on the findings and for the reasons enumerated in the staff report, subject to the conditions listed in the draft special structures permit certificate, to allow for the construction of the tennis court to approach within the thirty-foot rear yard setback.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Oh, sorry, you were saying you would do that, I'm sorry.
You gotta, you gotta give me a, to do something about it.
I'll second.
I'm sorry.
All those members say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and, uh, no exceptions.
You should feel, you should feel special if you got two seconds.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, yeah, very nice property. Have fun with it. If you take an offer pickable, I might come over.
Yes.
Ten of course, too, too great for me these days.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, and with, uh, with that, then I will go to item five, commission reports, anything here? All right, the only thing, I just, as a note, going to, let's, let's try to get the way, the way street drive thing straightened out.
We're consistent, we're used to it. They have all three.
Yeah, I know, but it's, yeah, it's been a, sort of a pop-up issue in the last four or five, you know, maybe in the last three agendas, so just, uh, the, the reason for that is not anything other than if we ever make a mistake that's on the wrong street and they both happen to be in, in the town, like there's a drive and a way, something complaining that they weren't, no, it wasn't.
No, sorry, or something.
Those, those probably, so just let's try to double up on that a little bit. All right, and nothing else? Uh, staff report, man?
Uh, just wanted to note that we will be holding the general plan community workshop on Wednesday, February thirteenth, so we'll be opening it up to the entire town, uh, bringing all of the administrative draft general plan element updates that the commission has considered since December of twenty seventeen, I believe is when we started the process. Uh, for more feedback and discussion, holding it as a Q and A, we've, we will be sending out a townwide mailer, so every town, residents within town will be getting something in their mail, we doing a website, actually, we already have a website going, um, and other means of, of advertising and getting the word out there. So, uh, post the community workshop and feedback that's received, then the elements will maybe tweak, uh, uh, another series again, and after which point, the, uh, required environmental document will be prepared and circulated and ultimately brought back to the commission for, um, a request for certification of the environmental document and a recommendation to the council. So, anticipate that happening, I would say, um, in late spring of this year.
All right, all right, good. I was thinking there was something else, uh, what, what are the things that we'll be going over that, we have some, we have some things coming up during the next few months, right, that are, that are, uh, that serve our annual type things, so.
Uh, we have the general plan conformance, um, that's required by state law, so that would be, that's usually, we do that in May, um, so prior to the end of the fiscal year. Um, we should have a couple of the schools coming in as well, with, um, private schools, that is, with their master plan updates. Um, I know that we've received some comments on a few particular schools and providing more specificity in those master plan updates, um, from the commission on prior hearings, so as staff, we've shared that with them, and, um, although we haven't received their plan updates, it's, it's noted that their update should include those details, uh, for the commission's requests in prior year meetings.
Any questions? I was gonna ask about the, is it inclusionary housing, or is it our affordable housing? Is there any follow-up that we need to be doing on any of that, or is it, we gave all these folks the ability to build in these granny cars?
Yes.
S B thirty-five type stuff, did, has anyone taken it up, or are we, do we have any idea?
Yes, so we updated, um, our inclusionary housing ordinance, but we call our accessory dwelling unit ordinance, um, last year, I believe, uh, in conformance with, um, S B thirty-five and state law. And to answer your question, have people been implementing it, um, in the real world? Are we getting permits for it? Yes, we have. Um, we've gotten, I'd say, a handful of those applications that are implementing the new state law that allowed for the conversion of existing buildings into ADUs or accessory dwelling units. Um, they've got their pool house or their guest house that's already there, and they wanna convert it for use, and a lot of times it, it looks the same. They're not really changing anything, except its functionality and the ability to habitate it for more than thirty days.
Yeah, I spent a lot of time in L A with my, uh, daughter, and she's looking for their, we can grow a new house, and I was like, L A is like, you know, if there was a garage, it's instantly an ADU, I mean, it's like, it's like there's two, and then, and then, and then I'll say something like, you know, parking for two, and you're thinking, well, there's four cars that have to be there. So, I mean, but it's really, you look at these long skinny lots that they have, and there's the house in the back and the house in the front, and the long skinny driveway down the side of the house, it's like, I don't know, I don't know, that's just, um.
But, because people are worried for what they had.
I know, I know, but, yeah.
And, and the after ten, um, accessory dwelling unit ordinance does require an onsite parking space for every A D U.
Correct.
I'm surprised more people haven't done it, because it basically gives them the right to add more square footage, right, out of their, on their lot. That's the, that's the irony, that's why I'm curious why people haven't done it, it's a freebie.
We do, I mean, we, we do get them. Um, we get a fair amount of new ones, um, coming in, but the, I think, one of the key issues that changed our ordinance under S B thirty-five is the ability for people to convert existing buildings that don't otherwise meet the development standards if you were to construct a new accessory dwelling unit. Basically, the new ones have to be farther away from property lines, and say the guest house or the pool house, it's a good house to be in.
Two, two things I just, uh, first of all, I've been getting much more communication from mental colleagues over the last month, they've invited to the events, things like that, and it's probably based on some of the things we've done, that are in their, their plan, so they're definitely doing more outreach, I just want to give them credit for doing that. Uh, they're getting, you know, invitations to events and, you know, and, uh, you know, activities that they have on, on site, plus notification of things going on, so it's good. The other thing is there's, I got the notification of planning commission training, planning commission training.
That was just to you.
Yeah, well, I, I, I figured I didn't want to waste the time. Well, no, there was the leadership one, I said, well, I don't want to waste anybody's time for that one. But the, the second one was kind of interesting, it was like, it was like, it was something to do with, uh, uh, overall community, uh, community, community development or something like that, uh, there were two of them. And the second one was more interesting, the first one, it's later in the year too, it's August, I'll look at it again, I'll look at it again, and then we might want to talk about it next time, because that one looked like, we might want to see if one or two of us want to go to that one. It's just, it ju, the, the, the leadership one's just gonna say, well, here's how you're gonna be, things like that, you know, we're, you know, we're kind of, we don't have very complex meeting, so that's not a big deal, but the second one sounded like it was more related to some of the mechanics of planning than like the leadership.
Okay, we will, um, provide that to all the commissioners.
It was, I actually, I didn't get the first one, but I got the second one, because I'm not really a leader, so I think it was just the guys in leadership. But on the second one, it, what it sounded like.
No, they only, they only said the ones that needed it.
Was it like a process? It was a process, and how do we get our whole county?
Yeah, that's, it was much, it was much more of an overall process than about.
It was more processing, let's just try to simplify, I mean, you know, yeah.
I think I missed the data.
I, it's later, it's like in August or May or July, it's in July.
Yeah, I think I have it. Um, if this is the one that was put on by, um, San Mateo County Planning Directors Forum, yeah, it is, there was one, um, one upcoming on the thirty-first, which is becoming a leader on your local planning commission, and then there's another one that's scheduled for April thirtieth of two thousand nineteen, and that is entitled Housing in San Mateo County: Understanding the Changing Landscape.
Yeah, that, yeah, well, yeah, that, that would be the one I think we would, we would get a couple of us to go to.
Yeah. Um, so let us know, uh, if you'd like to attend, and we can.
I don't think I got that one for you, well, that doesn't sound familiar to me.
It's on one flyer. Um, I'll refer, I'll forward it, um, after this meeting's over to everybody so that you have it fresh in your inbox, and then just let us know if you'd like to attend, and we can work with, um, the group Twenty One Elements is, is the one who's how, how, hosting it. Twenty One Elements is a regional group of all the cities in San Mateo County that join in, and for the typically for housing-related purposes.
It came from Lisa, uh, to me, okay, and so they might have gotten, gotten caught under spam, because I remember looking at it going, I don't know, maybe I'm the only one that got it, and everybody's name was on it, so.
I'll resend it.
Yeah.
All right, anything else?
Sorry, 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 sorry. Real quick, heritage tree ordinance is being revised, the heritage tree ordinance, people working really, really hard on it. Um, so it'll circle back before council probably February or March, just FYI.
All right, any major that we need to know about?
Uh, no, just trying to make enforcement, it's stuff that you guys don't deal with, but on the enforcement end, we've had some challenges, so we're looking to shore that up, and then it's all the T P Z stuff that you guys already worked on.
Okay, cool, very good. All right, anything else? All right, do you, do you motion to adjourn?
Move.
All right, he shows up.
We're just trying to make sure we keep it under an hour here.
In a minute, so, but you're not, you're not seven fifty, you got it. We'll just, I'll, 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 say aye, aye, okay, we're done. You got, you got the motion second on that?
Got it.
All right, good.
But is it two days in there?
Yes. Come on, you know, I mean.